Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. And thank you so much for being with us to play for the panel tonight. Thank you for your time. It is now 6:06 PM and I'll call this meeting the word. What does this mean to the citizens? Do you have a question? Love the meetings are open to the public. All members of these meetings are open to the public. All questions should be asked by the time they're made for the citizens to address the board. This time we will say 10:16 out of order. The board is in a meeting in closed session. Your seat is numbered 0551074, 0551071, 0555072. The board is in place in closed session. Action before wishes to take resolve for a brief debate. Thank you very much. Any further questions? We have a check in with this gentleman here, please. Speaker, please start. But it's now set up to reconvene into our regular session at this time. We're so glad you're happy this time. Any questions? First of all, we have also the volume up here. They delivered for Jason's path, James' story. You checked after the first half of the quarter. So proud to have you and for the best one even partner for their school to complete round of presentation.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day. God, there's never going to be another day like this. This is a day that you created for us and we're called to rejoice and be glad in it. Before time began, you saw this day and this moment and through your perfect and pleasing will, you called it to come to pass. And so, Father, we're thankful for this opportunity that we have to enjoy this day, but also to meet together to discuss these important topics that'll be discussed. We know Forney ISD matters to you because the people of Forney ISD matter to you. You love each and every person in this community, in these schools, and in this room. And we know that because you told us that in your word and you showed us with the gift of the gospel through our Lord Jesus Christ. We also know that education matters to you because, God, you are the source of all truth. And so, as we seek to grow in knowledge and to learn, we do so acknowledging that we are the creation, trying to ultimately know and learn what we can to better understand you, to love you more. And so, Father, we do pray for this meeting. We pray for a spirit of peace as items are discussed by individuals with sometimes differing opinions. Would we seek to understand others over being understood? Would we be slow to speak, slow to anger, and quick to listen and to learn from others? That we pray for grace, to see each and every person the way that you see them, made in your image, worthy of honor and dignity and respect, because in each of us, we bear your image. God, we pray for wisdom, as decisions are made which will not only affect students, but families and the community at large. God, we pray for our superintendent, for Dr. Terry. Thank you for the way that you've gifted him and the life experiences that you've given him to lead in this community. You tell us in your word that all authority comes from you and you establish leaders. And so, Dr. Terry is established by your hand. He's a gift from you to this community. And so, we say thank you. Would you bless him and continue to use him in increasing ways to bless this community? And God, we pray for these blessings on Dr. Terry, because when you bless him, you activate his giftings and abilities. You in turn bless us. Lord, we pray for the teachers and administrators of this school district. God, thank you for these men and women who have dedicated their lives to education. Would you be gracious to them? Would you give them every spiritual gift they need to lead our children well? That we ask for a spirit of gratitude for these men and women who spend their lives serving the people of Forney and beyond, so that the boys and girls of this community can grow up to be men and women of character and competence for this nation and for the world. And Lord, we just pray that you would make the administrators, the teachers, the staff, all the people of Forney ISD, would you make them leaders amongst their peers? Would you give them wisdom beyond anything we could ask or imagine, so that Forney ISD could continue to become a shining example of education in the state of Texas and beyond? And finally, Lord, we thank you for your provision. We acknowledge that the resources of this school district, the needs, they come from this community through taxes and generous donations, but we also acknowledge that you, Lord our God, own everything. And so, these resources we received are ultimately from you. So, we give you thanks for the decision made by this community to support the school funding referendum this week. We pray that the decision makers in this room would continue to be good stewards of the resources that you've given to meet the growing needs of this community. Would you, in a way that only you can, multiply the funds to allow this board to do even more with the school funds this year? As we turn our hearts to this meeting, we simply ask that you would be here, Lord. Would your will be done in our schools, in our families, in our lives, and in this room right here tonight? God, remove any distractions, any spirit of disunity as we open this meeting, and we ask all this in the name, above all names, the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would like to thank the school board and Dr. Terry for allowing us, Jackson Middle School, to recognize one of our finest. It is my honor and privilege to recognize Kyra Woodard, an eighth grader at Jackson. Kyra plays volleyball, basketball, and is a library aide. Her favorite class is broadcast journalism because of the projects that she gets to do. And one day, Kyra wants to be a baker or a chef. I would like to read some of the statements that our teacher said about Kyra. Kyra is a phenomenal young lady. She is always smiling, has a positive attitude. She is always going above and beyond for everyone that she comes encounters with. She's smart, talented, and a role model. I do want to read Coach Bogart's specific statement, because it's very touching. Coach Bogart said, "I could write a book about all the great things Kyra does. She exemplifies every quality you would want in a leader. She is always the first to ask for help, whether in the classroom or athletics. She is also one of the kindest people you will ever meet, with the biggest heart, and extends that kindness and love to everyone she sees. She has a playful and precious personality that is contagious no matter who she's around. She does any, she goes above and beyond for everybody. She's a fierce and strong competitor. I can't wait to see what the future holds for Kyra. So Kyra, we're so proud of you."
Board members, thank you for the opportunity to recognize such wonderful students in Forney ISD. So my student up here in the front is Bowen Powell. He is a shining example of what we love all of our students to aspire to be, which is a strong leader with moral character. I asked a few of Bowen's teachers to share some words about this wonderful student, and here's what they said. His third grade teacher said, "Bowen was new to Claybon last year, but made an immediate impact on the culture of our classroom. He took a leadership role right away. He leads quietly, yet respectfully, always modeling the behaviors and character traits you would hope to see in others. He is constantly looking for ways to help or be kind to his fellow classmates. He cheers for everybody." His fourth grade teacher said, "Bowen is an exceptional student and person. His warm spirit embraces Claybon's vision. He is the kind of kid who is a friend to all, helpful to adults, and is a joy to be around. He goes out of his way to make others feel included." His PE coach stated, "Bowen is a student who loves to see others succeed, and he will go out of his way to make that happen. When in class, Bowen seeks to help other students with the concept or skill being taught. He does so in a way that supports whatever the teacher's explaining, but shares it in such a way that helps the student understand it better. He is a model student and a great example of having the utmost character and integrity a human being should have. What a special occurrence when three different teachers all notice the same thing," and what I would agree is one of Bowen's best qualities, his empathy for others. It is rare these days with all of the distractions that exist in the day-to-day lives of our kids to have a child who notices. Bowen is a child who notices. He is acutely aware of the needs of others, and he actively seeks to step in and provide support to those around him. He loves to see others succeed. We are thankful, Bowen, for the impact you have had on our campus, and we know you will continue to be an exemplary leader all throughout your life. Please join me in congratulating this outstanding scholar and our Claybon Elementary Student of the Month, Mr. Bowen Powell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Let's do it second. Okay. So Bowen, you can go first.
Ready, Bowen?
Chairs, we'll hear second.
At this time, we'll move on to acceptance of some donations. First will be tonight, from the Forney Foundation. This time, Justin Etherly, Executive Director, Forney Education Foundation, will come to the microphone.
Thank you, President Ferris, and good evening, board members and Dr. Terry. I'm here this evening representing the Forney Education Foundation, and I have some great news to share with you all. The Forney Education Foundation is approaching its 20th anniversary in existence with a mission to provide opportunities for excellence in education, promote innovation in teaching, and partner with the community to enhance the quality of education for all students. One way we accomplish that is through our annual teaching grant program. The foundation created the Innovative Teaching Grant Program in 2008 to recognize and support innovative and creative instructional programs that positively impact students at Forney ISD. This is an annual opportunity for teachers and staff to submit a grant request seeking funding for their project, and is a competitive process, with applications being reviewed by campus principals, department managers, Forney ISD administrators, and finally, the foundation grant committee. This year, we received 110 applications, and I'm happy to announce, we are funding 66 of those requests. Once again, our highest number of grants awarded in a year to date. This would not be possible without the amazing support of the foundation's Board of Directors, the foundation's grant committee, collaboration with Forney ISD leadership, and the Forney community for its continual support through the Adopt a Grant Program. I would like to thank the following groups and individuals for this year's funding support of teaching grants. Brown PTO, Claybon PTO, Jackson PTO, Ray PTO, CoServe Charitable Foundation, Kumon Forney, Inspiration Roofing and Construction, Trinity Valley Electric Co-op, Walmart, the Cortez Fleming Family, the Highsmith Family, the Noel Family, the Prasad Family, the Revalt Family, the Salgado Family, and the Turner Family. Finally, I ask you to please accept this year's total awarded amount of $123,891.36.
Thank you for that presentation. We do have to take formal action, I think, to receive this, so I have a motion from the board.
Have a motion for Mr. Johnson. Have a second. Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so, move. Thank you. We invite up our foundation for a photo. Those resources go a long way and help fund a lot of special projects, so thank you so much. Next, we're going to move on with some student recognitions. This time, Ms. Kim Alafont, Assistant Athletic Director, will come to the microphone and have some music.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Terry and to our board. On behalf of our athletic director, Neil Weaver, it is with great pleasure that we recognize Jane Salgado tonight. Jane is a junior at Forney High School and has been a member of the FHS track and cross-country teams for the past three years. Last year, as a sophomore, Jane missed qualifying for the state country meet by six seconds. This year, she placed 13th at the regional meet, earning a chance to run at the state level, where she finished 35th out of 150 runners. Not only is Jane an elite athlete, she is an exceptional student. While taking challenging AP classes, Jane maintains a near-perfect hundred average and is currently ranked number three in her class. And if that isn't impressive enough, Jane is the current state champion in UIL editorial writing. Jane, we are so very proud of you and look forward to your continued success. Congratulations to you and our legendary head coach, Sandy Cook.
Moving on to our next recognition, I'd like to call Mario Luna, Fine Arts Director, to the microphone. Mr. Luna, are you in the house? Once again, there's Mario Luna, Fine Arts Director. Give him a big hand.
Sorry about that. I was trying to work something out, fine art related out there, so. So, yeah, I mean, I think everyone knows, it's posted everywhere, it's on every newspaper, everything. Our Forney band, I mean, they're just doing amazing things. We got back almost 3 o'clock in the morning, Tuesday night, I guess Wednesday morning. Just, I mean, outstanding finish. And there's just so many folks to thank. I mean, I've got a few notes here, but, I mean, it pretty much just starts with the support from here and the, and the community. I was still in the press box when I got a text from N40 asking for like a statement all this. I was like, I was like, we're still here. So, I mean, just, just the support from the community, lesson teachers, I mean, I'm sure we have parents here, and I mean, those lessons start in sixth grade now and go all the way, and that, that staff helps us. Our admin from the campus level to district level. If folks realize how much logistics it is to move 300 some kids and parents from, you know, everything from forums to hotels to, I mean, there's just so many things that we get so much help with. Our secretary, Ms. Lambert, I mean, just rock star person. Our band boosters, I mean, that is a huge part, part, part of this group, because if you've seen this group, I mean, there's just so much parent support that helps with so many things. And then the, the staff. So this starts in sixth grade, I mean, with Ms. Bain, and it goes all the way to, with our seventh grade staff and our middle school staff and our high school staff, and Mr. Sneed and Mr. Jacobs, and our, and our marching techs and all that. But it does start with one person, and that is Mr. Newman, if he can come up here. So, I mean, you know, just like everyone knows, it starts at the top, it starts with one person. I don't know how many years ago, it was about seven, eight years ago, when we first had a chat, and I was like, hey, there's great stuff in Forney, you want to come over here? And it didn't kind of work out the first time, but the second time, I, we kind of found him, and he came to my house, actually, and we spoke outside, and we talked for probably an hour and a half, and, you know, just saying how great Forney is. And I was like, dude, like, you need to come over here, because he is just one awesome person. So, as far as results, I mean, I mean, so close to third place, but history-wise, we've only been ace in the past. We've been 10 times, 1982, 1983, and then we've been 2009 all the way on. I know Mr. Chase is not here, and it's, he's not a fan of it, but now state marching contest is every year, so this means that we should probably be going every year. It's very expensive, but we get support. So, let's just bring out your kids. So, we've got our drum majors and some of our leadership team here from our, our band. So these students are with us, because obviously, we can't fit 275 kids in here. So, we wish we could, but maybe we can have this meeting at the OC next year when, when, when we have the space for them. So, so, you know, there's 252 marching bands in, in 5A. The top, I think it was 32, 34, performed Monday, and then they took the top 12. Monday evening, we, we came in eighth place, which is the second highest that we've ever. And then, at finals, we, no, it was fifth, sorry, on Monday, and Tuesday afternoon, you know, they're going 12, 11, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, and then four, and it was Forney High School four. So, just one awesome job to these guys and their band directors and band staffs. This is your Forney High School band. Smile, smile, smile. And then I'm going to finish up with one last thing after this, these last few pictures. I'm going to just let Mr. Newman say a few things about the show, just so you kind of understand what the show was about this year.
I just wanted to share a couple of things. You haven't got the chance to see our show this year until In the Arena. It is based upon Theodore Roosevelt's famous man in the arena speech. It was a Colosseum Roman concept that we took and worked. But the In the Arena, the man in the arena speech goes like this, and this is from 9 April 23rd, 1910, in Paris, France, Theodore Roosevelt delivering this message. It's not the critic who counts, nor the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood who strive valiantly, whose errors come short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows, in the end, the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly. So that in his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who never know victory nor defeat. And this concept came together because actually, my son, who's in high school, we had, we keep our ideas, and, and heard this term called a tryhard. I don't know if you've ever heard of this, where it's like a kind of derogatory, their kids, they're really giving out effort, they're trying hard, and people are like, maybe you should go try hard, and it's like knock people down who are giving great effort. I thought, what? Every show we design, we try and have like a core message and theme delivered to the students through the end, that we can come back to over and over and over, and teach them something about life beyond marching band and beyond high school. And what better message, I think, than especially this day and age, with our kids and our schools that strive valiantly, dare greatly, there's always going to be critics out there that are going to say nasty things, make things, throw rocks from the distance, but when you're the one that's in the arena, that's in there daring greatly, you're the one that's going to strive for the honor and be the one that comes up before you in the end. So, that's what my message has been for these students who have been here, who have done an amazing job. And to illustrate that, physically, two students, I, I would just point out, one of them, in the arena, in the dome, in finals, at the opening scene of our production, they have these, a lot of color guard, fantastic Forney color guard here tonight, they have a red flag in one and a sword in the other, and she took a gash to the ear with the sword in the opening part of the show, and continued on, the blood just down her neck through the entire production, has a true gladiator warrior princess. You can see her right over there. Yeah. You know, she will like forever be a legendary Forney man warrior, right there, for her efforts. And then, and then we had another amazing thing, well tragic, the first week of school, we had a girl break her leg, not on, not in Forney ISD club. Like, she, she broke her leg and, and, and wanted so badly to be a part of the show, and she came to band every single day, person completely immobilized, crutches, and watched every practice at 6:45 in the morning, did not miss a single practice, could not march for weeks and weeks and weeks. Got her cast off a week and a half before the state championships. Another student tragically wasn't able to be a part of it, got an injury, and she was like, Mr. Dunne, my doctor said my boot comes off tomorrow. Is there any way I could try? And I was like, you can try, I know you can learn 82 pages, eight and a half minutes of choreography, the drill, plus the music, and it's real nice. She said, will you let me try? Let's go for it. She marched in feelings and mind up at the state championships in front of thousands and thousands of people. If that's not, these two girls and the rest of the band, if that's not the epitome of In the Arena, and setting them up for incredible success, you're like, I don't know what else is. I'm so proud.
Thank you so much, students. This is your Forney band.
Well, congratulations, and it, this is just a small portion of the hundreds of students and parents that are involved in that. Thank you to them all, and congratulations. Now, the next recog- Now, the next recognitions we're going to do, I'd like to ask Kristin Zestable, Executive Director of Marketing Communications, to the microphone to recognize our veterans.
Board, Dr. Terry, thank you for letting us come before you again this year. This is always a special time of year and a special board meeting for us because we take some time to honor our staff who have served in the armed forces. So before we announce some names tonight, I'd like to just share a short video with you.
Each year, on November eleventh, we pause as a nation to honor those who have served in the armed forces of the United States of America. Veterans Day is more than a federal holiday. It's a day to reflect upon the sacrifices made by the heroes among us. They are our neighbors, our friends, and our family. We'd like to give a special thank you to the teachers and staff of Forney ISD who have served in the military. Your dual roles as educators and veterans enrich our community in measureable. Today, let's just not celebrate our veterans, let's also reflect on our role as citizens to support and honor them, not just today, but every day. To those who have served, we say thank you. Your sacrifices are etched in the heart of a grateful nation and community. May we strive to be worthy of your sacrifice today and always. God bless our veterans and God bless the United States of America.
So, that video tomorrow, we plan to share out in our employee newsletter along with the names of over fifty veterans who are on our staff here in Forney ISD. So, as you can see, I have two slides up here this evening that I'm going to share with you that have names of all of our staff. Some of them were able to join us this evening and for those that join us, we'd like to call your name and have you come forward. If Kelly or I miss you on your way in, please just come on up and tell me your name and we'll make sure we have your certificate up here. For those that couldn't join us this evening, we'll make sure they get their certificate at their campus. So, joining us this evening, Mr. Wayne Boland from Forney High School, who served in the U.S. Navy. Ken Coleman from Forney High School, also U.S. Navy. Mr. Reginald Jeans from North Forney High School, U.S. Army. And our very own school board member, Dr. Michael Edimudia, who I believe, Mr. Edimudia, can you tell us what branch? Marines, if you would join us as well. Jennifer Kennington from Forney High School, U.S. Navy. Carol Comazares from Jackson Middle School, U.S. Air Force. Jacob Lawler from Rhodes, U.S. Army. Latisha McLean from Blackburn, Army Reserve. Montana Olier, North Forney High School, U.S. Air Force. Jimmy Parton, Forney High School, U.S. Marines. Andrew Potter with Ray, Navy and Air Force. Caleb Smith from North Forney High School, U.S. Army. Melita Timmons from Dewberry, U.S. Army. Vidal Valentin, Valentin, North Forney High School, Navy and Air Force. Do we have any other veterans who may be slipped in this evening that we did not get your name on the way in? Jason Harris, oh, let's see, Jason Harris from Jackson, U.S. Army. Thank you all so much.
Moving on to item seven of reports, we're going to have Susan Johnson, who is Executive Director of Strategic Partnerships, and she's going to share with us some information about Opportunity Central and introduce some guests tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, President Ferris, Dr. Terry, distinguished members of the board. Robin Pierce, come on up, my friend. Robin and I are pleased to share with you some progress on the OC and to give you an update. And we're going to start this report with some recognition of some new partners. There are three categories of partners that we will present this evening. There's a business partners, sponsors, and student-operated businesses. First, we are going to start out with the recognition of our business partners. I'd like to introduce Stay Golden Gifts in Artisan Market. You guys come on up. Owners Brandon and Emily Golden. This location in the OC is an extension of an existing gift shop in Kaufman. This, this gift shop will feature personalized gifts and locally sourced vendor products. In addition, the shop will work with Forney students to offer selected student-made products for sale. Welcome, Stay Golden. Moving on, we have another great partnership here, Printer TX. Our owners, come on up, guys, Owners Jess Tello and Jose Wagner. They will be moving their existing store from Dallas to the OC and rebranding their business as Printer TX. This creative duo specializes in all formats and sizes of print and graphic design services. They are known as creative doers. They can do all things, they are a one-stop shop for all printing, design, and marketing needs, signage, et cetera. So welcome Printer TX. Oat Salon, owner Carolina Herrera, has an established salon business in Heath, Texas. The OC will be a second location to offer services and training for current and future staff. Services will include men's and women's and children's haircuts, including cut, color, and style. In addition, both manicures and pedicures will be offered at the OC. And the oat is oat, hot oat. I'm working on this, Carolina, I'm going to get it right. But this is, it is oat salon, so welcome. The next recognition is going to be of one of our sponsored spaces. We are lucky enough to have Huckabee Architects here. Huckabee has made a very meaningful contribution. They are, they have furnished the collaborative space found at the front and center of the OC. Conveniently located in front of White Rhino Coffee, the space named by Huckabee as the Mix is designed for comfort, collaboration, and functional use, which will include access to free Wi-Fi. We are very grateful to Huckabee for all the work that they have done and all the work that they've put into the OC, and we are very thankful for this donation that will serve so many of our community. So thank you guys very much. Can we, can we pull, get the three of you guys? Yes, do you mind, please, real quick? Thank you guys so much, appreciate it. Okay, and now we are going to move on to our student-operated businesses.
Good evening, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and the board. I have the opportunity to talk about the six student-run businesses that were opening up phase two in the OC. First, we have Code Ninjas, and Code Ninjas will serve not only where our students learn the business side of all of these programs, but learn finance, inventory, marketing, merchandising, all of the things that go into running a business. Our students will learn this. And then Code Ninjas are engineering and our computer science students will work not only running and student-operating this business, but also being the sensays within there so that they can, you can come on up, Eric, so that they can do all of the things within that business. The next one is Novus Escape Rooms. Super excited about this, our students are super excited. So our students, our engineering students will help put together all of the escape rooms, they will run the escape rooms, the technology behind the front end and the back end of an escape room, and then we'll also keep the inventory, marketing, all the books within that escape room. The next is Cosmetology. So with our new, with Oat, our new partner, our two, students will work when they're in shadow, but they will also run their own business in two ways. One way, students will be able to come out, our community will come out, students will do haircuts, blowouts, a lot of women like the blowouts, manicures, pedicures, facials, arm massages, hand massages, all at very discounted rates, so we're super excited. And the next one, they will also host Christmas, princess parties, so if you have any little ones, we will host princess parties, with our students will host those as well. The next one is our esports lab. Right now, we currently do have esports clubs at all of our intermediate and middle and high schools. So this space, our students will be able to utilize that, the actual clubs to practice and prepare for competition, as well as Thursday through Sunday nights and on the weekends, we will host parties for our community for esports events. The next is the OC Junior. You know what the OC Junior is? It's a beautiful indoor play area, so our education and training students will run a student-operated business out of there, hosting parties at nights and on the weekends for our community. And last is Assembly Required, which is an innovative maker space where we will engage our community and the students will be trained on all sorts of equipment within that maker space, and our community can come in and do crafts, everything from building a wooden sign to painting a Christmas wreath, you know, you've seen those things, all sorts of really cool stuff for our students and our community to participate in.
And wait, there's more. We have event spaces that are going to be available for a multitude of functions at the OC, from seventy-five-hundred seat arena space to six-hundred-seat theater, classrooms, dance floors, volleyball courts, pickleball courts, and so much more. There's space for everyone, and so we have been working hard to get all of these spaces developed and making sure that all of our layouts are finalized and we will have a whole tiered structure that we'll be able to roll out for our community as well. Another space in the OC is the Green Room Studio. This space is very well-lit, it's probably one of my personal favorite spaces in the OC. It is, will be designed for a photo studio, so whether you are a professional photographer, professional photographer, or an amateur, you can come to rent this space to take your photographs, and we will have that equipped with all kinds of unique props and furniture. The Gallery is another space that our students will have the opportunity to display their artwork, and this will also be another chance for our families and students to, or families and community to purchase student artwork if they see something that they like. The Engage Space is yet another space in the OC that will be run to allow our community and students to come and see what is available for them to participate in. So we will have this equipped with people that will be able to discuss all of the fun and engaging things that you can do at the OC. These activities include a sport league, such as the Youth Recreational Sport League. The first one that is starting, registration will start in January, that is our volleyball program. This will be for grades three through six, it's a co-ed volleyball, and we will be creating those leagues and having sign-ups starting in January. Next, we will have footsaw, basketball, esports, and pickleball. And everyone is welcome to come to our grand opening kickoff celebration, which will be on Friday, February second. Let's Groove is the theme, and we will have our Emerald City Band, as well as many of our Forney ISD performing groups, all coming together as one to really rock out the arena space. So we're expecting that whole space to be full, so we hope that you will make plans to come do that. And that is all I have this evening, thank you.
Well, thank you. Exciting days are ahead, lots to go on, and thank y'all for all your hard work and preparation. This time, we're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll continue with the meeting. Thank you.
But we're going to get through this. The reality is, without the work of Mr. Chase and the ladies in the finance department, none of the others would be possible, so bear with me as I work through this. We're going to go through the three funds. First of all, we have the general fund, the revenue for this month, total is twenty-four point two million. Of that twenty point three million is state aid. That compares to last year, this year it's thirteen percent, last year was fourteen percent, so we're right in line. Our general fund expenditures, year-to-date so far, forty-nine point four million. Debt service budget is sixty-one percent expended, and part of that is because it's, it's done more on the cash basis as opposed to the accrual basis. Maintenance tax note principal and interest payment of six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. This compares to last year, this year's twenty-six percent, last year was twenty-eight percent, so again, we're right on target. The food service revenue, the year-to-date revenue collected is one point seven million so far, that's six hundred one thousand student lunch and à la carte sales, one hundred thirty-seven thousand supply chain assistance, which is federal funds, and nine hundred twenty-three thousand school lunch and breakfast programs. We had, this year we had one hundred fifty-nine, one hundred fifty thousand nine hundred thirty-eight reimbursable meals served, which is up thirty-three percent. We would like to think that the decision that you made to move to Aramark has had some impact on that. I think our kids are, are choosing to eat in our schools more maybe than in prior years, so that's exciting. Our expenditure, I'm sorry, our revenues are twenty-three percent this year, twenty-one percent compared to last year. to last year, so again, we're still pretty close on target there. Our food service expenditures this year so far is 1.3 million, 14 percent this year compared to 14 percent last year, so again, very much on target. Finally, we have our debt service revenue. Year-to-date revenue collected is 732,000, which is 1 percent. Again, it's exactly the same as it was last year. And for our debt service expenditures, year-to-date expenses are 31.1 million, prior comparison is 59 percent compared to 58 percent this year. I would love to tell you I could answer questions, and you know, maybe basic ones I can, otherwise I'll be happy to talk with Mr. Chase and get back to you. Thank you. I should pay attention. So, these are our balances right now at the end of September. So, general fund is 50,201,935 dollars. The food service fund is 2,746,637 dollars. Debt service fund is 26,747,601 dollars, and our capital projects fund is 359,844,155 dollars, which makes sense that that would be the largest balance. Okay, now I think that's my last slide. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, board. I'll actually ask Jeff Fisher from Gallagher to come up and go through our current projects, and then we'll actually show you plans for a future project. Kate Dumphy will come up and, and talk through that, so Jeff?
Thank you, Ms. Morsak, President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board. As always, it's nice to be with you. I'll go through their status report on our current construction projects. First and foremost is the Opportunity Central Project. Just heard a, a lot of good information about that, and we're putting the final touches on it and pushing right to the end and basically getting ready for February the 2nd, so that one's, that one's getting ready to wrap up, it's coming along very nicely. Forney, North Forney High School Freshman Center, that's Phase One of the North Forney High School additions. That one's coming along fairly well. As I think we reported to you before, we had some steel delays during the first part of the project, so we're pushing through the final stages of, of that one and trying to get all the finishes wrapped up and getting that ready to, to get turned over by the end of the year here. So, we're making a, making a very hard push on that one and Forney High Freshman Center as well. That's just some more of the North Forney, you can see the work going on there. Phase Two of North Forney, the stadium arena project is coming along, early stages, basically getting the foundation work done, the grade beams are in progress, and all of the underground utilities and electrical are moving along. That one is on schedule at this point. I mentioned earlier, the Forney High School Ninth Grade Center, again, it's basically in the same stage as North Forney, just trying to put the finishing, finishing touches on it, getting the finishes, trim pieces put on, finishing up ceilings, those kind of things, and, and getting that one again, ready to move in by the end of the year here. And then, Phase Two, Forney High, the Field House Project, again, it's coming along very well. You can see the foundations are going in, the exterior beams and sidewalks and things like that, and then you can see the foundation beams there in the bottom corner. Again, that project's coming along and, and appears to be on schedule as we sit today. Teemer Middle School, coming along very nicely, it's moving along just like we would expect it to. Basically, structural steels in the process of being erected, it's completing some areas and we're finishing up in the last couple areas, following that with roof deck installation and CMU walls going up and site work progressing along as well. Same with Warren Middle School, that project, again, structural steel's in progress and finishing up in a couple of different areas, working on the interior framing, getting the roof deck done, and moving along with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing rough ends. Ed Wilson Elementary, basically, the foundation is complete, the structural steel erection is in progress. As you can see in that top picture, the tilt wall for the storm shelter's been put up, and they're working on the roof part of that now, and then the site work, underground utilities and paving is being completed as well. And then the Innovation Way Expansion, that's from the roundabout to the west that goes down to and in front of Ed Wilson Elementary, the paving's getting close to being complete, and they're working on getting the finishing touches on the utilities, and then they'll be moving on to the sidewalks and get that part of the project completed. And I believe that is the end of our status report, be glad to answer any questions if you have any. Oh, sorry, I thought I was done and I wasn't. How could I forget about Ray Intermediate? Ray Intermediate, basically, we've got the new teacher parking lot, basically complete, and finished up the striping on it. Basically, that's the only thing that we've been able to do there, because we've gotta get that parking lot put in before we can start on the building that actually goes on the existing teacher parking lot, so once we get that switch-over made, then we'll be part, started on the, the building part of that project. Oh, the switch-over happened today, sorry. I'm behind, what can I say? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We actually had a punch walk yesterday on the classrooms on the east side of the OC, so really coming together there, it's looking really good. But the switch-over did happen today, Ray, so the teachers are in the new parking lot, so that will start coming together pretty quickly. Kate Dumphy is our principal architect from Huckabee Architects, and she's gonna talk about a future project coming of the future FLA. Kate?
All right, good evening, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, great to see you again. I'm excited to present tonight the floor plan of the building for the new FLA. We're gonna take a look at this facility that houses the DAEP and ASPIRE behavioral programs. The, we had the unique opportunity, since this is an existing campus and facility in the district, to meet with the program leadership, to really understand their needs and what are their priorities for this new facility that will replace the temporary campus that we have on the north side of town. So, we were able to set the design parameters from programming on security, flexibility of the programs as they grow and fluctuate in capacity, durability of materials, and then efficiency in the layout and design for economical construction. So, you can see, we've got two classroom wings on either side, these are stacked two-story wings that can be segmented to allow for the different age groups and programs to expand and contract as they grow over the course of the year. And there's three classrooms in each pod, and then a flex space, so that as they start to grow, some students can occupy those spaces, and then staff can use those spaces in the interim as well, to give the campus a lot of flexibility over how to use the space that they have wisely. The area in the core, you've got the orange is the administrative portion of the building, that's where your controlled vestibule is, and then the blue and the green spaces there behind it are the gym and the dining area. That gym and dining space are the shelter for this facility. The second floor, just the classroom wings are stacked with the administrative and kind of library and open reading spaces that connect those two academic wings. And then we get the fun stuff, lovely photos of what we expect this to look like, the modularity of this building, you notice the symmetry, the repetition of the grid of this building allows for really simple design and construction techniques to take place, so we hope to see those advantages when we price it and build it as well. Any questions? Oh, and then we have some interior slides, too. Top left is your main entry, bottom left is the shelter gym, and then the small group dining space there on the right. Quite neutral palette, we have this really peaceful, green tranquil color for our accent color throughout the building. Any questions? All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Kate. The green color's actually called tranquility, so... Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'm actually gonna start this, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Rocky Gardner from Zonda Education. He is our demographer, who will be going through the draft zone tonight, so just as a reminder, the reason that we rezone in Forney, we look at our current enrollment, analyze our growth projections from our demographer like Rocky, evaluate our current facilities and the capacities in each of those facilities, then the board sets rezoning goals and parameters. The demographer proposes a draft plan, which is what you will see tonight. We'll then ask for community feedback, and I'll show you a timeline here in a second with what that looks like. We adjust the plan as necessary from there, and then the board adopts the plan. So, this is the, the timeline, we are at November 9th, the first reading at the board meeting tonight. The feedback will, will come in two, two ways. We'll have a questionnaire, a question forum, and a feedback forum that Kristen will send out to our families. Then on November 13th, we'll have a, a community information session where we will provide this information to anyone interested. On the 16th, at the special call meeting, we will have a public hearing. And then on December 4th, we would propose the adoption of the final plan, based on any changes made from that feedback. In December, we'll send an, an email and post on the web to any impacted families that the zone impacts. And then January and February will be mascot voting and staff transfer process. So, that's our normal timeline we follow, and we'll follow the same timeline this year. So, the reason that we require this attendance modification plan this year is because we are opening Ed Wilson, as a reminder, that will be a standalone dual-language campus when it opens. So, Criswell will lose the dual-language program, so their zone needs to be expanded. The intermediate and middle school dual-language programs are currently at Rhodes and Jackson, but they're kind of getting a little full, so those will move to Clay Jones and Warren in this proposed rezone plan, that's the proposal we currently have. And then, we're also opening the new Teemer Middle School and Clay Jones in the current Warren, we opened the new Warren. So, opening three new campuses obviously requires a, a change in attendance zones, so... And our goals, as always, that the board has set, are to optimize the space and efficiency in our buildings, to prepare for future growth, so we're not rezoning the same children over and over, if possible, keeping students as close to their home campus, the campus closest to their proximity as possible, and then using natural lines, streets, creeks, that type of thing, neighborhoods, to, to draw our lines. So, with that information, I'm gonna turn it over to Rocky, and he's gonna go through the three maps with you guys at this time. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back. Good evening, everybody. So, it's always work, right, to do boundaries, so, so it's always, when the growth is going this fast like it is, there's just really no way, no way around it, and, and like Kim said, we try to, you know, we don't want to impact students year after year, so, but when you're, when you're adding 1,000 students, you're basically adding more than an elementary school every single year. So, that's, you know, when you get in that mindset, we, we try to build something that's gonna last for as long as we, we think things can happen. I don't know if you guys have seen this before, so I just leave this up, most of the changes are all on the north side there. You can see that we expanded the Criswell Zone a li- li- little bit, because they now have a little more opportunity. This is where most of our growth is happening, too. You know, we, I think we've closed about 1,000, about over 60 percent to 70 percent of your closings are occurring on the north side, so this is obviously impacting the north side more than any other area. So, with that boundary, we've got numbers here for you, this enrollment forecasting. We're still not rid of all the yellow, and I don't know when that'll ever happen, right? So, that's overcapacity, but we get out to 2028, and, and I think that's really, you know, when, when we start looking at this stuff, that five-year window would be really great, I mean, to not have to impact, because if we could get out there to that four to five-year window, then we haven't impacted any families twice, and that's kind of a good target for us there. So, you, you can see there that we, we definitely have some challenges ahead of us, but we've got schools and things are, things are looking much better than they looked a couple of years ago. If we look at the intermediate, I'm gonna show the in- intermediate and the mid- middle school plans, and I can also back up if you need me to, I, I know you guys have seen these probably once. Intermediate plan and the middle school plans are, are the exact same boundaries. And you can see, it's a nice little, it looks like a pretty good little even diamond, just walk, walk around, around there. There's your intermediate campuses. Again, with 1,200 capacity, we think that this intermediate plan could last out to 2030. I think that's a, that's a strong opportunity there, and even then, we might even could push it a little bit past that, if things, if things consider to grow. We've had a little slowdown, and then it's, you know, but it, just, just as a reminder, there's still 30,000 futures in VDL to be, so it's not, it's not gonna stop anytime soon. And then, of course, we have the middle school plan, looks just like the intermediate plan, thank goodness, and the, the intermediate numbers, or the middle numbers you can see are out there. You know, you would think it'd be the exact same numbers, because you got two grades at each, but the, the class sizes that are going through the district right now, that, that's just gonna, you're gonna see ebbs and flows in, in those districts. But again, I think we're pushing out past 2030 now with our middle school plan. Oh, that's me, okay.
I just wanna remind you, you're fine, before any questions, just a reminder, the intermediate and middle school plans do give us direct feeders into our two high schools, so a little, not quite as clean right now, but this will allow us to have two schools feeding into North Forney and two schools feeding into Forney High, which is great for athletics and academics, just to, to keep those kids in that consistent feeder pattern, so. Any questions for Rocky or I? Clayman?
And Clayton. And Clayton, so, you know, I want to point that out, I don't think that's a true feeder pattern, I think that's a very unique opportunity for us. This is the first reading, just wanted to remind you of that, so if you have feedback, we're wide open to that. Love to give Rocky some more work to do, you know, he doesn't have enough ideas. So, if he has some ideas on how we might build a new sponsor, Chase and I, we believe, listening to our feedback and our hearing, but also from our board, if you have any, thank you, I'd just be really glad to know. So, if you have any questions, we can be on the panel. Thanks. I don't think I should, but, but yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and the school board. A lot of times I come up to you and with this great boring policy, but tonight is one of the most exciting things that I think, and I want to first start off about to congratulate the school board, our staff and community for this monumental victory in support of Forney ISD students. And I can tell you, I'm, I'm just amazed again at the outpouring of support that we, we received. The school funding referendum will allow the district to increase teacher-staff, excuse me, teachers, yes, teacher and staff salaries to help us recruit and retain quality educators in a time when there really is a national teacher shortage, so that we can have an opportunity to be very competitive, to provide the best staff for our students. As discussed during the budget development process this last spring, the employee retention pay would be contingent on this successful voter approval tax rate election baiter. So, due to the successful results of this election, the administration is now recommending paying all full-time employees... paying all full-time employees thirty-six hundred dollars as a one-time stop-in. The stop-in will be included in their November paycheck and the total cost of this will be approximately nine million dollars.
We'll take just a few comments if that's okay. I just have to say a huge thank you to our community for supporting, this is a sixty-nine, seventy percent approval rating. This is our third election in four years. And for the community, continuing to trust the stewardess, the leadership, our staff, it's just a blessing. And so I can't say how appreciative we are of our community, but also wanted to just tell our whole world, thank you. It is not easy in the climate that we're in to call a act of education election, which you saw, this is a great need for kids and a great need for our staff and a great need for our community. And so I just wanted to convince you on your great leadership. Not all schools across our state would make this decision, and you did, and it has a huge impact to our district, not only this year, but for years and years and years to come. This is huge for Forney ISD, so thank you. I would say, not are we recommending tonight, but we are ecstatic to recommend tonight a thirty-six hundred dollar stipend this year. These funds also, we hope to come back to you in the future, this spring, to consider additional raises for our staff in the future. So tonight, we happily, excitedly recommend approving a thirty-six hundred dollar stipend. It will be just in time for Clay Friday. Thank you, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris. If you have questions for the board? If I hear that, I have motion.
Mr. Ferris, I have a motion to approve the employee's stipend as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Fairs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
If both. Moving on, I have consideration possible approval of additional FTEs.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As part of House Bill Three that came out of the eighty-eighth legislative session, it required and mandated school districts to provide an armed security officer at each campus during the regular hours. The district currently has at least one police officer at our intermediate, middle school and high school campuses, but in order to fully comply with this law and to provide increased security at our elementary schools, the administration is recommending tonight to add eleven additional police officers to our police department. Additionally to that, three officers will be needed to provide security for Tamer Middle School, for Jones Intermediate School, and for our new Ed Wilson Elementary Campus opening next fall. The estimated annual cost for these fourteen police officers is one point one million dollars. The revenue to fund these positions will now be funded with the successful school funding referendum. The additional police officers will help provide a greater level of security now for all of our campuses within Forney ISD. The plan initially is for us to begin hiring these eleven officers with the three remaining officers for Tamer and Jones and Wilson to begin this summer as well.
No, sir. Other than Chief Sanders, you got some work to do, it sounds like, sir. We're excited to be able to have these officers on our campus this afternoon. Makes up for the short call of our state legislatures. They offer fifteen thousand dollars a campus and it is much, much more than that. So thank you, indeed, our community for supporting this, ensuring safety for all of our kids and all of our families. We highly recommend approving tonight the Forney ISD. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Dr. Ferris, we are excited about this opportunity. Thank you, Chief, for your leadership. And I know you have, you have a case to get, and fill all those, find those, and we know you did a great job of it. Do I have a motion from the board? Mr. Ferris, I approve the FTEs for Forney ISD. Thank you, Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
If both. If I hear that. I have as well, if you have any questions on tonight. I'm sorry. If you can, I'll just can't work that back through my phone. Do I have a question?
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Over the past several months, we've been working with the city of Forney for a potential wastewater agreement that would allow us to use Forney, the city of Forney sewer system for a possible donated site at Helms Trail and sixteen forty-one. The developer's been working with us and as part of that donation that they would make, we are trying to enter into this interlocal agreement with the city for sewer service. This interlocal agreement would allow Forney ISD to construct a sewer line to connect to the, to the city of Forney sewer system and serve the donated property. It's only valid upon the completion of the land donation from the developer and the approval of the interlocal agreement from the city of Forney. So at this time, the administration would recommend the approval of an interlocal agreement for wastewater services and grant Dr. Terry the authority to finalize the agreement with the city of Forney.
Thank you, Dr. Ferris. Dr. Ferris, just a few comments there. With approval of this tonight, we'll send it over to the city council. You're going to be able to, he's got a seat there, I'm gonna be able to be in twenty. Give us a resolution, maybe for our sewer solution. So we recommend seeking going to approve, go ahead and approve it. I don't know, that's, that's presented for us, I think. Dr. Ferris, Dr. Ferris, have any questions for the board? I have a question. Mr. Ferris, we just want to approve the local agreement for wastewater services for the state of Forney, and to present to the board an agreement that's similar to employee substance, delegate a priority to certain tenants, to let's give the agreement and documents necessary to. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Do I have a question?
Second.
Mr. Dobbs? All the papers say aye.
It's Bateman. It's Bateman.
Moving on, I have certain bids, Dr. Ferris, consideration possible approval of construction bids?
Yes, at this time, I'll ask Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction to present the construction bids to the board.
Good evening again. As we prepare to open the new Warren Middle School next school year, comes with that the necessity to do some renovation work at Clay Jones, at the existing Warren that will become Clay Jones. So we took bids on renovation of the locker room areas to turn that into classrooms to gain capacity at that building, as well as some renovations to the hub. And so we took regular construction bids based on Huckabee's design on that. And then at the same time, we did some pricing through tips to do some exterior upgrades, clean up the outside of the building, replace the lighting, replace the signage, do interior cosmetic upgrades on the areas that weren't being renovated for flooring, painting, those kind of things, to get that building, you know, to where it looks like a brand-new building to the new kids that'll be attending Clay Jones Intermediate School. So we've got the two proposals that we're presenting together tonight. The first is the renovation project, which total comes out to be seven million. All right, I've gotta do this, sorry. The, the thing that I've found that comes with old age and glasses is that you have to also remember to grab the glasses, which I did tonight, and so I'm doing well. The total on the construction renovation project is seven million eight hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. And then the total for the tips project is one million nine seventy-three thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And those two combined together total up to nine point eight million, which is the exact budget that we had budgeted for that project. So we're happy that we brought it in. Be glad to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions for the board? Thank you, sir. If I hear that, do I have a question? President Ferris, I move to approve the construction bid. I have a question, do I have a second?
Okay.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
If both.
Thank you.
Moving on, I have a question, consideration possible approval of this to approve early plan of construction of the building for the Kaufman Central Appraisal District.
Thank you. Mr. Chase is celebrating his son's graduation, so I have the honor of presenting this, so be kind. The Kaufman County, as you know, is exploding in growth and due to that, the Kaufman County Central Appraisal District has had to hire extra staff to keep up with that growth in their appraisals. As a consequence, they are at capacity in their current building. They've been looking for some options and they, they feel that the best solution would be to build a new facility. This would allow them to have office space as well as adequate lobby space for the taxpayers who are there and some space to have review panel boards, which they don't have currently. They are proposing a six-point-five acre site that's currently owned by Kaufman ISD and they have agreed to sell the property for four thousand dollars an acre, which, as you know, is a very good price. The estimated cost to build a nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five foot square, square foot building is eight point seven million. In order for this facility to be built, CAD would need to secure a loan for the construction cost. Assuming a twenty-year loan and an interest rate of five point two-five percent, the annual payment would be about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Forney ISD's share of that would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Three-fourths of the taxing entities do have to approve the transaction before the project can begin, so that would be twenty out of the twenty-six taxing entities for Kaufman County. We are requesting a resolution to approve the purchase of land and the construction of the related, and related financing of the building for the Kaufman County Central Appraisal District. And we ask that you approve that as presented.
Thank you. I think of all the districts and entities in our county, Forney ISD, under the damage of growth and the impact of growth, I think the facilities probably more than anyone else. And so we would recommend approving tonight this resolution as a one of twenty-six that we should print as, if we were, but we recommend for a resolution presented. If you have any questions, you have any questions, the administration would recommend. Or if you heard from the administration, if you have any questions. If I hear that, call for a question. Mr. Ferris, I move we approve the resolution to approve the purchase of land, construction of Forney ISD, Kaufman Central Appraisal District. Do I have a question? Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
I have a record reflect, Mr. Dobbs, as I'm saying. If you have other? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. This next item is also regarding the Kaufman Central Appraisal District. In the current rules governing the selection process of the board members, the Kaufman County Appraisal District, Forney ISD is allowed to make one appointment. This is a one-year term. It was, has been a two-year term, but it's now a one-year term. And our current appointment expires on December thirty-first of 2023. For the past six years, Robert Dobbs has been our appointee and he has done a great job with the appraisal board. He currently actually serves as the chairman of the appraisal board. He is willing to serve an additional one-year term if the school board chooses to reappoint him. Tonight, we would recommend the approving a resolution to appoint Robert Dobbs to the Kaufman County Central Appraisal District Board for a one-year term that would begin January first of 2024 and end on December thirty-first of 2024.
Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry. Mr. Dobbs, he's done great work across the county, Kaufman County, also has talked with Chief Rager, Sarah Gerges, and she hired her assistants and she continued her role in the, and, 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 and,